Okay, it's seven o'clock and welcome everybody to the August nineteenth meeting of the Planning Board. We have all seven of our members. Earlier, we took a site walk down to fourteen Tuttle Road to review the site of the proposed communications tower that will be item one of our hearings and presentations. We got on first-name basis with a lot of raspberry bushes and hopefully not many as far as the ticks were concerned, but check your ticks at the door. Okay, the first item will be a review and approval of the minutes of the June seventeenth meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Oh, make a motion that we approve the minutes as written.
A second?
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor? We move to site plan approvals. Bridgette, item one is the MSA D fifty-one for relocation of five hundred and four square foot portable classroom, three fifty-seven Tuttle Road.
Yes, so the school needed an additional sort of classroom space and they put it right behind, you may have seen it tucked in back there, right behind the superintendent's office. So it was just a simple move from the middle school area over to the parking lot for the superintendent's office.
Okay, questions from the board? Just a note, while we're looking at the site plan of the new school, we worked very, very hard with abutters, neighbors, the engineers and the school district to put together a site plan that was acceptable to everybody. And given the nature of the school district really needing the time to begin construction, we've got the plan through in one meeting. Subsequent to this, we have had two minor and one major, I would call violations of our site plan. The first was a minor one with regard to dust. But again, the neighbors had to call this in. It wasn't something that was self-taken care of. And the other one was that they completely closed off the parking lot that was access to the gym and swimming pool without notification to the recreation department. So that Monday, when several parents or many parents were dropping off their students for access to the gym and swimming pool, were found to be blocked out and caused a great deal of confusion till things were settled in. Again, both of those things should have been taken care of by a construction superintendent. And finally, we have very, very, if you folks come to a lot of our meetings, we have very, very detailed landscape plans that actually goes down to every tree that is ten foot in dia- ten inches in diameter and larger. And this is especially important when you're have trees that are close to abutting neighbors. Well, sadly, three of these trees, large trees, next to an abutter were cut down in total violation of the site plan ordinance. The school district theoretically has a construction manager that's supposed to be taking care of this thing. And unfortunately, you don't replace these things with little saplings and hope they grow in twenty years. So the school district is going to do a, is putting together a mitigation plan. And I can speak for the town that if this thing isn't done totally to the town satisfaction, they are not going to get a occupancy permit for their field. And given the fact that all these little kiddies want to play soccer and football and everything, this is, this is something that goes against the promise we made to the neighbors and doesn't look favorably on the planning board either. So I'm sorry, but I'm not a happy camper. We went overboard to the school district and they dropped the ball. And as I say, I'm not a happy camper on it. Item number two is a site plan amendment. Cumberland Fairgrounds for the installation of a twelve-hundred-square-foot Swartman's Building at the Fairgrounds Road, tax assessor map R oh seven eight one. Bridgette?
Yep, this one's just pretty straightforward. A small, new building was requested by the Cumberland Fair, which the ordinance gives me the approval authority to approve that site plan. And I think they're hoping to have it completed before the fair, the end of September. So drive by and take a look.
Okay, thank you. Yes.
Yeah, where will this be located on the fairgrounds?
So it's in the, oh geez, I put my geography to the test. It's, it's all really on the corner of like Blanchard and Bruce Hill.
Okay.
So there was a little, there's like a mini little riding arena right there, I think, like a sand pit. It's right near there.
Near the museum.
Yeah.
Okay, well, we'll move to herrings and presentations. Item one is a site plan review for the installation of a telecommunications tower located at fourteen Tuttle Road, tax assessor map R zero one, lot zero three in the low-density residential district and public safety telecommunications overlay district. And the applicant is Verizon Wireless and Vertical Bridge Towers. And the representative is Gordon Smith of Verrill Dana. So Bridgette, can you start this off?
Sure, I don't know if there's much to tee up here. In the memo that was first posted with the planning board, it shared the links out to the council packets when the council made the decision to add this parcel to the public telecommunications safety overlay zone and some other pertinent information. And I think now it's just time to hear, hear the, hear the presentation.
So this is a, this is a permitted use per the two actions taken by the town council?
Sure, the underlying zoning permits, the use of antennas and the public safety telecommunications overlay district, I want to say it the right way, allows the construction of a tower, yes.
And to cut other stuff on the path, off at the pass, your memo and what was available to the public that they meet all the FAA standards as far as wavelength emissions and which is also been verified by our peer engineer. So that will be not, that's already, already approved. So that is not with anything that we're going to review or talk about tonight. That is set policy and such.
Yeah, yes, I can confirm that. The Verizon calculated the maximum radio frequency exposure to be nine point one-four percent of the maximum possible exposure set by federal regulation. And as long as we're under that, we cannot.
It's not in our purview.
It's not in our purview. And then that number was also confirmed by a reviewing engineer who's also present, if we have any other questions. And that information's included in the packet.
Okay, that, that being said, then why don't we go ahead with the presentation?
Thank you, Bridgette, thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. Again, my name is Chip Fredette, here on behalf of Verizon Wireless and Vertical Bridge. Many of you has listened to us for the last couple of ones talk about this project, proposed one hundred and forty-foot monopole at property owned by White Pine Community Church. We're doing it more or less in partnership with the town's public safety group to improve coverage, not just for public safety, but also for Verizon Wireless subscribers. I'm going to go ahead and turn to the propagation maps if I can here. So in the packages that we submitted for this application, I'm scrolling to the end to find the radio frequency modeling, the colored maps. And they're probably at the bottom, here we go. Okay. The first of which on the screen, here we go. Just to orient you folks. So for those of you who aren't familiar with a map like this, so this is a map of our existing coverage in the Cumberland area. Of course, I two ninety-five running to the center of the page here. Color schemes, you've got green representing a strong signal strength, yellow indicating a lesser signal strength. And of course, gray even less in white, nonexistent coverage or unacceptable levels of coverage for Verizon. So again, the goal here is for Verizon to provide coverage north along one, south along one, and to the foreside area here. Take a step back. So we've got the sites one, two, three, and four here kind of provided, that have provided coverage to Cumberland, beginning with this first site off Range Road. That is a site that Verizon co-located on more than twenty years ago. The tower is that lattice tower we talked about on the, for those on the site walk, again, on Range Road. It's, the tower's owned by SBA Properties. And again, that's, that site is more than twenty years old. We've got a site here in Yarmouth that is a water tank in Yarmouth. So again, another, what we call a co-location. So not a tower that we built, but rather a tank that we found could work for our purposes. So we co-located our antennas on it. And alas, we have coverage kind of in the southern portion of Yarmouth here. Cumberland Two is a project that I worked on with your former town manager, Bill Shane. That's a tower that we built at Valhalla, at the golf course. And then down here, at the bottom of the page, just over the border, this being the town line, for those of you who are familiar, this here is a site that we co-located antennas on, owned by AT&T, along Route One there in the town of Thalmith. So the sighting of the proposed tower here is very similar to this one in that the goal is to provide coverage to the, to the foreside area. Upon completion and construction. So the computer modeling here is showing us the proposed coverage. The proposed, what we call LTE or seven hundred megahertz or four G, as you folks may have, may be familiar with, coverage from the proposed site. So where am I? I like the page up-down toggle because it makes it easier for you to see the difference, but I'll just scroll. So again, before and then after, you can see how much this site will fill in the foreside area here. The next map, similar, again, existing PCS coverage, so twenty-one megahertz as opposed to seven hundred, a less robust signal, hence the smaller footprints, but nonetheless, improving PCS service here. So setting aside the different frequencies, your phones are programmed to communicate through all of them. So I like to lean on the, the four G coverage here as being the one that, when we look at our phone, we say, how many bars we have? This is, this is probably the most accurate for, for that purpose. Someone had asked, how far will this footprint cast in all directions? Little, little tough to say, but if I try to lean on the scale here, I'm going to say probably a half to three-quarters of a mile south, the same north. To the east, you're going to see that we're going to catch some of the island over here. That's Cousins, correct? And then to the west, we're not going to want to shoot the signal as far because the range ray site is already carrying much of that load. So that, though we have a sector point in that direction, my guess is that will be down tilted considerably so that our phones aren't confused as to which site they're talking to, whether it's the range ray site or the new one proposing here. Any questions so far on, on the need? And then, of course, the propagation from the existing, or from the proposed site, rather? Okay. Okay. I'm going to scroll back up in the package to the site plan. And I know we just went over that out on the property, so I'll be quick with it. I'm scrolling past our FCC licenses and into our site plan. So again, the boundaries of the White Pine Community Church parcel here, approximately twenty-one acres in size. The church was willing to lease us the space more or less in the middle of the property. And again, for those who weren't part of the site walk, the location of the site itself in the access drive here and the utilities were chosen in preparation for what may be construction of a new parish. So this plan again was designed to harmonize with their future plans. Little closer view here over aerial. Again, twenty-foot wide access easement here coming from foreside, Route eighty-eight. A separate ten-foot wide utility easement here along which we will vary our power and fiber serving the site. The leasing area itself is sixty feet by ninety feet. We will propose a forty-foot by sixty-foot fence compound. So we'll clear the entirety of the easement areas and the leasing area, nothing beyond. We don't have rights to do so, but the fenced area itself will be forty feet by sixty feet. Existing conditions, plans, just key to note here that unlike most tower sites, we're actually on fairly level ground from accessway to, to the site here. Most of the sites we work on are, go uphill. Proposed conditions, again, a little better, better view here for you folks. Proposed curb cut here, culvert for drainage, twelve-foot wide gravel road running to a parking area, forty-by-sixty fence compound. And again, those underground utilities coming from an existing utility pole here. Once constructed, the sites may see one visit per month. They don't generate a lot of traffic. They're all monitored remotely. And then plan view of the compound area and of course elevation view of the tower. Forty, forty-by-sixty foot compound. We show Verizon's equipment in the top right-hand corner here on a twelve-foot by twenty-foot pad. And then our engineer at Duberry simply shows the possibility of three more similar-sized pads, not to say that they all use the same size pad, but generally speaking, they do. So the tower will be structurally designed to suit not only the town and Verizon Wireless, but also three additional carriers, should they decide to deploy. So going forward, what's that mean for you folks? Well, that would mean that somebody like myself, representing AT&T or T-Mobile, for example, when looking for a new site in this area, would have to prove to you why this didn't work for them to build a new tower. Details on generator, cable bridging and the like. But again, all of the improvements, but for the final CMP-owned transformer, all the improvements will be inside that six-foot chain-link fence compound area. Happy to answer any questions?
Questions? Yes, Lorraine?
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind, can you go to page one fifty-six in the package?
Sure.
And I think what we're seeing there is a series of photos that were taken around the area.
Sure.
And then there's a photo of the existing view and then the, the view with kind of in, the tower kind of put into the, the photo. And what I'm particularly interested in is photo eight and photo eleven because I think we had a number of abutters from that residential area.
Interested in that vantage point?
Yeah.
Sure.
And I'd, I'd like to kind of see what you all show as far as what their existing view is and what the view would be with the hundred-and-forty, forty-foot tower.
Sure, happy to. So this is, this is the report to which we were referring out in the field a little while ago. We call it a view shed analysis. So what we do is we float a balloon to the proposed height of the tower. Then we drive all public roads within a half or a full mile of the site. And we photo the balloon from any location from which is visible. And then if there were areas of concern, we would take photos regardless whether the balloon was visible or not, just for affirmative perspective. So I'm happy to go through this with you. So what we're looking at here, existing view, so you see the balloon within the trees behind the power lines here. Photo one A. And then we've superimposed the galvanized steel one hundred and forty-foot monopole in this view here. So this is photo location two, the balloon was not visible. I wish I had a separate screen so we could look at the key map at the same time. I apologize. So view one, it was visible through the trees, view two, it is not. Existing view here, number three, southwest from foreside road. Again, photo three A before, you see the red balloon just over the top of the trees here. And then the proposed tower here. Existing view here, balloon. And then to scale, again, monopole, town's equipment and then Verizon equipment just below it, over the solar farm. Here from middle road. Balloon. And then monopole here. Again, this tower would be very similar to the monopole just over the border in Thalmith, right along Route One. Easier seen from two ninety-five than Route One. Facing south from middle road. CMP transmission line. And then the monopole itself there. View seven. Northeast from middle road, again there. Boy, I need my cheaters. So it's here and then here. I should note, it's, when we do, when we do balloon floats, we're looking for the balloon. We're, we'll run computer modeling to determine those areas where it's impossible to view and those areas where it could be visible. And we're driving at twenty miles an hour with the hazards on in the car, looking, looking for this balloon. So a lot of these vantage points from which you may be visible to us now in the still shot probably won't be as you're driving the actual speed limit and with your focus on the road. View eight.
And these would be the closest to abutters?
From carriage?
Yeah, that's the one, was carriage road.
Yeah.
Okay, I'm going to go back up to the balloon. So top of the tower there. Oh, here we go. Through the trees here. And then here.
Is that carriage road?
Yeah.
Three carriage road.
Okay, because they're the nearest.
Photo nine, the balloon was not visible from carriage road. And then another view, vantage point from which the balloon was not visible. Again, also, yeah, facing north from carriage road.
And then this is the last one, I think, that's on foreside road at the end of the carriage road, okay, thank you.
Sure. And right here, in the very center of the page, view through the hole in the sky there. And then galvanized steel gray tower here. Balloon not visible from this, facing northwest from carriage road.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions from the board?
Not necessarily a question, but just kind of a statement from viewing these images that I, I mean, I saw last week, but looks like the middle road actually has a more of a view than
Yes.
the foreside does.
Yes.
Or even carriage road, for the most part.
Topography plays a big role in that, of course.
Because it's coming down.
Other questions? So do you have other, is that it or do you have other?
I could talk all night if you'd like.
No, but I mean, is that?
Yes, that's absolutely, if there are questions, more, if there's more technical questions about the, the propagation maps. Avilio is here to answer on behalf of Verizon and Norm is here to answer on behalf of the town. Chris from Duberry here is, is here to answer any specific questions about the civil side, so.
That's what we can do if we're, if the board is done.
I have one more question.
Okay, go ahead.
On page seventy-six, I think it was, I'm trying to get back to it, but
Sure.
talked about the, both sides of them and only one of them of the road going down the twelve-foot road. Trying to get back to it.
The culvert?
Yeah, so it shows it on the images both, but it does say no, says no swale at downhill side, but it shows it on the, on the image, I was just curious about that.
Yeah, I can explain. So that's a standard detail that they will add into any of one of our plans that meets our criteria. And again, it's just to show that we can build it on either. And again, it's just to show that we can build it on either side qualifying that it'll be on the, yeah, on one side.
So, that dip will only be on one side?
Correct.
Okay.
Correct.
Okay. Being no other questions, I'm going to open up the public comment. Try to do it a little different here on the planning board, in the sense that if somebody has got a technical question, rather than just have everybody make comments and be frustrated, that we do have technical experts that can hopefully answer your questions. And in some cases, maybe we can't, but again, hopefully to cut down on the confusion, but again, kind of be respectful of that. So, that being, if anybody wants to comment on it, please come up to the podium, state your name and where you live, and any comments that you want to make.
Hi, my name is John Burgess. I live at Six Carriage Road. I appreciate, in the packet, there was a radio frequency exposure graph and additional information that was presented that shows a 9.14 percent of the maximum permissible exposure by federal regulations. I have a couple of questions involving that. The first one, I heard tonight that there's room for three other cellphone companies on this individual tower. And so, there could be a total of four. This number, 9.14, does that address all four cellphone companies that are going to be on the tower?
I'll let the technical, our...
Good evening. It's a pleasure to be here again. My name is Avilio with C Squared Systems out of Auburn, New Hampshire, on behalf of Verizon. So, the packet you're referring to addresses the MPE, the maximum permissible exposure values, for the Verizon deployment. Does not address the other operators. Having said that, in the packet, there's a table. And in that table, you can see the actual numbers that lead to the computation of the 9-point percent. And along with that table, there is a column that tells you the maximum values that are allowed by the FCC standards that have been set and defined, as you mentioned, sir, earlier today. Now, from experience, I can tell you that 100 percent, beyond 100 percent, of which we're only at 9 percent now, is not permissible. If you add multiple operators, you may be at 15 to 20 percent, which is still very safe. And that's typically, those are typical values. And that's the answer to the question.
So, the number, excuse me, so the number of 9.14 doesn't address the potential of all the cellphone towers, cellphone companies that are going to be on the tower?
No, but we're just addressing this particular thing.
Okay. So, I guess my question is, do the other cellphone companies become, come before this planning board at that time?
No, but they have to meet a standard. They still have to meet the safety standard, if I'm correct?
Alterations to antennas on a tower by Cumberland ordinance go through me, where I find, I make findings, similar to what the planning board does, just based on the additional or replacement antennas.
So, will your findings also address this additional radio frequency?
I have the same standards to meet as the planning board, yes.
There was a note on the first, well, there's a note that this is in regards to Federal Communication Act 47 U.S.C.A. 332C76. Can you tell me when that law was enacted?
I cannot.
We've got somebody here.
Yeah, sure. 47 is the 1997 Telecommunications Act.
So, are these standards based on 1997? The radio frequency limits, were they based on data that was in 1997?
These numbers are based on the physics of radio propagation.
The limits.
The limits are, the thresholds. They're based on the physics of radio propagation, and basically, we're looking at power per unit area. And power hasn't changed. We know the powers we were working with back in 1997, and we're still within the same value. And those thresholds are really based on physics, physical values, and the laws of physics have not changed in that respect.
Okay, I'm not gonna get into a debate. What are your other questions?
The limits were set in 1997. The limits were set in 1997 before 5G was ever around. So, that's my question. Have the standards been updated to keep with 5G that's being installed here? Are we comparing apples to apples, or are we comparing oranges to apples?
I will revert to our technical people, but as far as I'm concerned, we are complying with what we're supposed to comply, and whether it's 5G, 10G, or whatever it is, we're complying with what we're reviewing. And I think I said that when we started. And I'm not sure if our technical experts want to go further.
I think the public needs to know if we're comparing standards from 28 years ago.
So, I think what you're asking, and as a former federal government employee, the FCC law that we're referring to is the law on the books currently. There have been, to our knowledge, no additional federal regulations that change those standards. And so, that is what we're held to from a federal perspective, and then, we have state perspectives, and then, we have our local ordinances. And so, we're following the rules that are currently on the books.
Yes. And I guess my question for the experts is, do those standards apply to the frequencies in the signals that are used today, or are they based on what was available in 1997?
The standards that FCC licensed, FCC licensees are held to, yes, are the same standards as they were in 1997, but it hasn't changed, whether it's 2G, 3G, 5G, or the public safety equipment, or your remote control controlling your television. Anything that emits energy is governed by the FCC. So, regardless of what technology comes forward, we're still bound by the same rules. In our application, C Squared provided the town with evidence that our site will comply with that standard, whether it's 2G, 3G, 4G, or 5G, doesn't matter.
Okay, anything else?
Just could you show us on the map where 680 feet, which was the maximum exposure point in your graph in the RF chart? Is there any way to kind of show where 680 feet is?
It was a distance of 680, did I hear that correctly?
Yes.
Okay. So, I can only estimate, but I can show you that the tie line here from the tower center to the property line is 649 feet approximately. So, 680 is someplace just beyond that tunnel here and here. Again, I believe that that would be the 9.14 percent maximum limit to which Avilio was referring in his computation.
Okay. Thank you very much. I have just one left.
Sure.
Thank you very much. I have just...
No problem.
Thank you.
No, we're learning.
There hasn't been discussion tonight, but there was a question on fall zones and what that distance would be. And I think the overlay ordinance adjusted that fall zone limit, and I guess I want to know what that distance is. And could you define a fall zone in that? When I think of a fall zone, I think of someone being injured. That structure shouldn't be within a distance, well, it's gonna affect property, it's gonna affect the church property if the tower falls, but could affect people? And when I talk about people, I think about people arriving at church and parking in the parking lot. So, is the church parking lot going to be located outside of that fall zone?
That's, thank you. So, the question is about fall zone. I should start by saying, it's not uncommon to address this question in any municipality. When you're proposing something tall, what happens if it falls? Well, just because it's tall doesn't mean it's gonna fall. I use this analogy, and you folks probably can come up with some on your own. In the town of Bedford, New Hampshire, for example, there's a monopole that's been standing for close to 20 years, and it's built adjacent to the police and fire complex. There's many instances like this where there's towers, whether it's a monopole, a lattice, a guide, some of them even built on top of these buildings. Not to mention, all of which have been structurally designed for that location for certain wind and ice loading. This site will be no different. Okay? So, the process that we go through to design a tower begins with you folks. We determine what the location is together, we determine the type and the height of the tower, after which, we file for our state and federal regulatory approvals, which they'll review the application process, they'll review the site itself under their own purview. And only in such times we have full regulatory approval, again, local, state, and federal, do we then commission a geotech, a soils analysis, at that location. They'll do three or four soil samples, they'll send those soil samples to the tower designer, the tower manufacturer, where in-house, they will design the foundation based on those soils, as well as the pole itself. Every site is custom-designed to that level. Will the tower fall on people parking in the parking lot? Well, for, I don't know where the parking lot will be. We think it might be adjacent to the facility, but again, there are numerous tower sites built within close proximity to buildings, people, malls, houses, public safety buildings, municipal offices, you name it. In this instance here, it is true that the rezoning, if you will, to the public safety overlay district did allow us some leniency with the fall zone requirement, so that that measure, that computation is now 0.75, 75 percent of the tower height. And yes, we will meet the fall zone requirements under Cumberland's regs, not only today as the parcel stands at 21 acres full, but should the White Pine Community Church move forward its plan, it would meet the fall zone requirements then as well.
But just as a clarification, I mean, if it fell over right now, it wouldn't hit Foreside Road, right?
Absolutely not.
And obviously, it's not gonna hit Carriage Road.
No.
And...
That would be true even if the church built its facility.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
Any other members of the public that wish to, yes?
I just want to repeat for the record, what I just heard was that Verizon is being sure that they meet regulations for state, local, federal, and that one of those regulations is 0.75 times the height defines the fall zone. And for the record tonight, that, my understanding, that people, cars, parking lots shouldn't be within that fall zone.
Well, as designed right now, it isn't.
I'm talking about future. That's why I want to make sure this is for the record tonight.
That's fine.
That's fine. Thank you.
Anybody else from the public wish to say anything?
May I respond to that?
Sure.
I'm Gordon Smith for the applicant. Just the idea that the Public Safety Telecommunications Overlay District establishes a 0.75 tower height setback, and that's what that number, 105 feet, represents, is 0.75 of the 140-foot tower. Now, that's from property lines. Okay, so that setback distance is, so you can't locate this tower closer than 0.75 of its tower height to a property line. And that, but in order to get to that 0.75 height, you need to have a fall zone letter, essentially, a letter from the tower company or the engineer saying that it's not gonna fall beyond that 0.75. Like, if there's some, in some instance, the way that the tower falls down, it doesn't just like start at the bottom and go all the way there, it crumples at midpoint. Otherwise, in the PSTO, you have to show 100 percent tower setback from property lines. And so, what we're showing here is this 75 percent tower height setback, which doesn't even come close to any property lines. And if there's a property line established in the future, then that future establishment would need to, you know, theoretically, the board would have authority to say, no, you can't create that property line because that's violating that setback. So, you know, Verizon and Vertical Bridge have a lease for this, you know, the area that we've been looking about where the tower and all this, the road and the utilities are gonna go. That doesn't establish a property line. That's a lease, that's not a property line. So, if in the future, the church wants to do something on their property that doesn't create a property line within that fall zone, that's up to them to, you know, they can do that at their own, there's already a tower there. So, I just wanted to clarify what that meant.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other members of the public that wish to speak?
Barvale, couple in center. Just one question, Peter. As I walked the site before I met with the group and have had some familiarity with that piece of land down there, one of the things that stuck out to me was accessibility after the tower's built there. And I'm wondering if, you know, kids being kids, there's lots of access points to that piece of property, and it's an attractive place to hang out. And so, I'm wondering if there's gonna be a gate out on the 88 end, limitations of access, if there's going to be, and I guess at some level, this must be, should be addressed by White Pine, as they're the property owners, how they plan to do a control act... they're the property owners, how they plan to do control access to the site. You know, people, I'm sure hike on there, explore it, certainly people that live in the neighborhood, but, you know, kids after hours can certainly get in there and hang out and do what kids do. So, having been a kid once, I know all about that. So, I'm a little concerned about access to the property after there's some improvements done to that.
So, Verizon, is there going to be a gate at Route 88?
We typically do in fact install, install security gates at our driveways. In this instance here, we don't show one on the plan because it's our assumption that this driveway will also serve as access to potentially a future parking lot for the church.
But right now, you'd have a gate there, correct?
No.
You're not-
We're not proposing one.
Okay.
Nope. Hundreds if not thousands of sites-
Kids would have to get through that razor wire, which would not be a positive experience. They could go on the other side and do what they needed to do. So, anybody else from the public? Yes, sir.
Good evening. My name is Sean Vaughn. I'm here on behalf of the abutting property owner, Three Carriage Road. Just wanted to raise a couple of issues that I've seen. The town, I guess, has hired CV and Mahar to do an independent review of the engineers' plans. CV and Mahar is also working with White Pine's church in developing this property. As I see that, that seems to be a conflict of interest, especially since the church will be generating income off of this project.
Oh, I think on that clarification, CV and Mahar was hired just specifically for this project, and obviously, that, they're an independent contractor, obviously have done this stuff. So, based on the experience that I've had, I just don't see a major issue in this. Plus, we haven't even got to the plans. We're just reviewing this specific thing and not what's going on in the church.
Okay. I believe CV and Mahar is here, is that correct? So, maybe they could clarify this.
I don't think we've got CV and Mahar on trial here, but if you want to come up, fine.
Well, they're representing both sides here. They're representing the town in doing an independent assessment, but also representing-
But we're just reviewing this, we're not reviewing what Pine, White Pine is doing.
I understand, but they're already working with the church.
As I say, we're reviewing this particular thing, they're doing an independent review-
But it's not independent.
-on the peer project.
It's not independent if you're working for the property owner.
Okay, your next comment.
Could we get clarification?
No.
If they're here?
I don't, is that, that's not our purview to get clarification. CV and Mahar wants to comment, they can, but I review that as public comment.
So, the second issue is, CV and Mahar, when working with the church, identified two wetlands on the property. CV and Mahar is now representing to the town that there are no wetlands on the property. Verizon is also making that same representation to the town. I'd like to get clarification on that from both Verizon and CV and Mahar.
Well, Verizon, you can go first. I don't believe going on our portion of it, i.e. their doing of the lease portion, there were any, did the site walk, and within the lease portion, there weren't any wetlands. But CV and Mahar, go ahead and-
Can I respond?
Say what you want to say, then Verizon.
Can I respond to you real quick?
What?
Can I respond to you real quick? Can I respond?
Oh, fine.
The issue is there's conflicting information from the parties involved here. So, CV is, like I said, apparently representing both the property owner and the town. They're saying one thing to the town, one thing to the property owner. As an abutter who is affected by these wetlands, I'd like to at least know if they're real or not.
Well, CV and Mahar, do you want to respond to that?
Yeah, Dan Diff and CV and Mahar Engineers. We did assist the church several years ago with a preliminary evaluation of what might be possible at this site. We are not currently under contract with the church on any project out there at this point. We did have a wetlands still in need and done, and there were no wetlands identified in the area of this project.
Thank you.
Just as he said, his review is that there's no wetlands on this project, he didn't say there's no wetlands on the property. This is a project that is currently being proposed as a full 21-plus acres, so-
We're reviewing the lease.
But the entire property is under proposal?
No.
No.
No, it's not.
Two acres. So, third issue is the existing road that's already there? Why can't Verizon use that? If there's-
Verizon, go ahead.
Sure, the question is why can't we use Carolyn Ridge Road during the site walk? I believe you were there. I mentioned that the purpose of designing the road this way is so that our plans harmonize what we think might be the church's future plans. Again, the hope, the hope is that when the church moves forward, that they will use our curb cut as their curb cut for their parking lot.
But also, isn't that the shortest distance with regard to your utilities?
That is true. So, with regard to utilities, that's true, but in terms of the physical driveway access, we were told they'd like us to design it in this fashion so that should they move forward with their plan, they would utilize the same space for the same purpose.
Okay. Go ahead. So, they're making, they're putting in a new road because of the future plans of the church, even though there's an existing road already there that can service this tower? There's, again, the church plans have not been proposed to any town body. So, are we considering them or not?
We are considering what the plan that they've presented, irregardless of whether it's for the church or not.
Is there a particular reason why the existing road cannot be used? Did I miss that?
Well, I think that, I'm not a, I'm not an engineer, I just play one on TV. If CV and Mahar or Verizon wishes to answer that, that's fine. I think you have already. Again, what's your question?
The question is why is the existing road not adequate for the use to access the tower?
Again, the answer is, this is the location that the landowner directed us to design the access drive. Just because Verizon or Vertical Bridge approaches the landowner doesn't mean we have carte blanche over the design. We have to work with the landowner. The landowner may never have any plans for the property, and they may say, "We'd like you to build the road here."
Okay, all right.
And then the last issue is what we discussed on at-site, was the issue regarding the availability of the application on the website originally when the planning board tabled this.
Well, I think the-
I just wanted to put on the record-
I think the attorney from Verraldana, that at that point, we were only considering changes to the ordinance, and for the cell tower thing, we were not, we were not going into detailed plans, so when we tabled that, my understanding is that it got taken off. When we got into the actual site plan, that's when all of this was available via the, via the agenda. So, a lot of that was, my understanding is that we were dealing at that point with changes to the ordinance, and they did provide information as to a lot of the electronic information and the, and the other stuff to help us and the council determine whether we should change the ordinance or not. But we did take that off once it was tabled, and that's- That's, yes, Bridget?
Well, in the application, the, well, the agenda for this meeting and notice of a public hearing was posted at Town Hall on July 31st and posted to the internet on July 31st, while giving us plenty of time within statute required for notification of the public hearing, and also noticed in the newspaper per statute.
So, is it the board's position that the plans were available July 31st?
Yeah.
When was the town council meeting?
The town council meeting for-
The zoning?
The zoning change.
It was July, in July, was it?
Would have been prior to that.
Yeah.
So, the position of the board is that these plans were not available to the town council prior to the hearing?
My understanding is that the council didn't have these. Maybe Bob can, Bob can clarify. But I don't-
The town council wasn't required to have the plans, it was a simple zoning change.
I understand.
There are links to the town council packets in my memo dated July 31st from when the initial application was posted.
So, we're just clear that these plans, the site plans themselves, were not available till after the town council heard and voted on the zoning issue?
Far as I know, the, as I say, they came out with the, with the minute, with the agenda.
Gordon Smith again.
Yes.
If I could address that. The site plan was part of the town council's packet, and they, we, it was looked at and by the town council during the hearing that we had.
So, it would have been in the town council packet?
Yeah, that's right.
Okay.
Which is, yeah, exactly.
Just working off memory, I don't believe it was. I believe there was portions of the site plan available to the town council, and we have a town council member here who may be able to-
Bob, can you jog your memory?
I'm not going to be held to the number of pages or what was on there, and I will go home tonight and I'll go back and look at that, but I believe the packet that I had had in excess of 100 pages, but whether that, that particular site plan there was on it, I can't recall, but there was a, a number of, the packet was fairly extensive, but whether it was the same depth that you, the planning board had, I can't answer that. But I will, I'll review that when I get home tonight.
Yeah. My story, and I'm sticking to it. He's not finished yet. He still has the floor. Any other comments?
I think that's it. My recollection is that the full site plans were posted on the website, but they weren't accessible through the planning board or through the town council prior to the meeting. I don't know if the still, the links are still the same or if they've changed, but that's just my recollection. The way I found these site plans was through the search function through the website, not through the links provided by the town.
Well, they were, I go by the town, I go by the town website is how I access it like any other member of the public does, and it was all on there. Do you recall that, Stacy?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
It's also posted publicly at Town Hall and available at Town Hall for anyone to view.
I think that's it. Thank you very much.
Okay, well, thank you. Yes.
Sorry, can I clarify just on that point?
I believe it's always one of these things that quip while you're ahead.
First of all, whether the site plan was available to the town council, I don't, it's not in front of the board, and it's not a requirement, so it doesn't really matter. But the application for rezoning for that, for the PSTO overlay was made by the town. So, Bridget, you must have a record of what was submitted, you submitted to the town council if the planning board really wants to know the answer.
I'm looking at 140 pages of things like, that are similar to what was submitted in the site plan application, but not from my quick scan of 140 pages, not the site plan.
Seeing the same thing, Bridget, up here.
Okay, anybody else? Yes, sir.
Do you have access to the video from the town council meeting? And if you were to look at that, I think you'll remember that I presented this to the town council, this drawing, because there was a question on how far the distance between the cell tower and the property. I gave the chairman my copy. She took a photo and sent it to the other town council meeting members during the meeting. And if you look at the town council video, I think that you will see that. So, this document was not available, people were looking for it, couldn't find it, and that's how it was produced. Yes, there was a package, but I think we just have to be sure of what's being said here is what occurred. Thank you.
Go ahead, Bob.
Again, my recollection is going to have to take some discovery back home, but I don't recall the site plan being in our, in the council's package. And one of the reasons that we had the site walk this evening, it was at my urging that the planning board or the council have the site walk that we had tonight, which I'm thankful that that came to pass.
Okay, anybody else before I close the public hearing? Yes, ma'am?
My name is Ivana Tarling, and I'm one of the abutter. And my question is, I don't know if Verizon or anyone can answer to, since this whole thing is being pushed by police who is trying to get better radio connections, how, how much better connection will they get by building this 160-foot tower? Anyone from the-
I think we have somebody that covered that in the council meeting. Yeah, that's, go ahead. You know, this is our-
Oh, yes.
This is our guru for distance.
So, as you know, the town is putting in a new radio system, which is going to consist of four sites, one of which is the Verizon site, which is a critical location for public safety communications, handheld portable radios. So, for pretty much the same reason as Verizon, because of the terrain there with Route 1 and cut terrain, there's no, there's no coverage there, or is very little coverage there, and I think the chief at the, at the town meeting last, last month showed a video that, that actually showed how difficult it was for an officer to communicate down in that region. So, we also have the Forside, which is- So, we also have the foreside, which is, there's no coverage there now, because of the steep embankment. So, the location of this tower is, takes care of all of those terrain issues, severe terrain issues in that area.
Thank you. Okay, anybody else wish to speak? If not, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the board. And, we've got some, any further discussion before we hit the waivers?
Yep, about that. Uh, hey, Bridget?
Oh.
Oh, she wants you to read the letter from Ms. Buffington.
Oh, yes.
Yeah, so you're going to have to reopen the public hearing.
Yeah, I'm going to have to reopen the public hearing. I forgot, we did get one letter from the public, and I'm required, again, if we have public letters to read this, so I, I apologize. This is from Lee Buffington. Dear Planning Board Members, As a Cumberland grandmother who frequents Broad Cove with young grandchildren, I am very concerned with the lack of cellphone service there. This popular area for beachgoers of all ages, swimmers, boaters, and hikers, is currently operating at a tremendous risk. An injury or medical incident, when seconds matter, could end up being far more serious or even fatal due to the lack of cellphone service. Please vote to support Cellphone Tower discreetly placed in Cumberland Foreside at Tuesday night's meeting, and this is Lee Buffington, Ten Village Way. So, with that, I will close the public hearing, and we will go-
I still, Bridget, um, the, in regards to waivers, the engineers had a few comments. So, uh, there's a requested waiver for a boundary survey, which the engineers said they would support as long as we have a copy of the lease area boundary. Do we have that, or do we need to put that in as a condition of approval if we approve the waiver?
I think we need to put it in there.
Okay.
I don't think we have the boundary.
And then, if we have it, they can provide it again. Wetland delineation, again, they were okay with it so long as we have NEPA approval? And is that still pending? That is, I think that's in the conditions of approval.
That's listed as a condition of approval, and just a quick note on the wetland delineation. The National Wetlands Inventory lists no significant wetlands on the site.
Okay, but we still need the NEPA approval as a condition of approval?
NEPA is still required.
All right, and then, yeah, and then there's one for storm water management, which I may request, propose a slight change to the condition of approval, but yeah, I know it's there. Okay, so, uh, I will make a motion that due to the unique nature of the project and the property, we waive the requirement for a boundary survey.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any further discussion, other than that needs to be, we need to add a condition of approval?
Yeah, if it isn't, it may be there, we just need to make sure, we certainly need to make sure there is a condition of approval.
Which would be?
We can-
Yeah, which? Yeah, so that's going to be number nine of a, a condition of approval, which we can read when we get to those. Okay, so any other discussion, all in favor? Opposed?
Okay, uh, I will make a motion that subject, well, that due to the unique nature of the property and the project, and with a proposed condition of approval, that we waive the requirement for wetland delineation.
Your second? Second?
Second.
Further discussion, all in favor?
I will make a motion that due to the unique nature of the project and the property, we waive the requirement for a landscape plan.
Uh, second?
Second.
All, uh, discussion, all in favor?
I will make a motion that due to the unique nature of the property and the project, and a proposed condition of approval, we waive the requirement for storm water management plan.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
I make a motion that due to the unique nature of the property and the project, we waive the requirement for noting the map, the well locations.
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
I will make a motion that, uh, due to the unique nature of the project and the property, we waive the requirement for a high-intensity soil survey.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
Make a motion that due to the unique nature of the property and the project, we waive the requirement for a hydrogeologic evaluation.
Second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor?
And very happily, I will lastly make a motion that, uh, due to the unique nature of the property and the project, we waive the requirement for a traffic study.
A second?
Second.
Okay, a discussion, all in favor? Okay, are we ready to go into the reading of the final, the findings of fact? If so, Ann, you're on.
Okay. I'm going to start with utilization of the site. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed facility will not impact any environmentally sensitive areas. The wooded lot, which will remain wooded aside from the 40-by-60-foot fenced compound, access road, and utility easement. Traffic circulation and parking. With the condition of approval, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed facility will provide the town a driveway entrance permit from MDOT for its entrance on Foreside Road. The planning board finds the facility's access road will provide safe circulation for emergency vehicles and the estimated one-vehicle trip per month. The planning board finds the parking area on the gravel pad within the fenced facility is sufficient for maintenance of vehicles. The planning board finds pedestrian ways are not required because the proposed use is a telecommunications facility. C, storm water management and erosion control. With the condition of approval, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the site area is flat and requires minimal grading, so existing drainage patterns will be maintained. The planning board finds a small 0.6% change in impervious area compared to the overall lot size that will have minimum storm water impact on the surrounding site. With the condition of approval, the planning board finds main erosion and sediment control best management practices for erosion control will be utilized on this project as illustrated on the site plans. D, water, sewer, and fire protection. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the new facility will not require water or sewer service, and the electrical utilities will be placed underground. Water protection. The planning board finds this site is not located within a town aquifer protection area, and no water or sewer connections are required for the telecommunications tower. The planning board finds a diesel fuel will be stored in a double-walled tank situated on a concrete pad to prevent spillage and potential pollution. Flood plane management. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the site is not located within a flood plain according to FEMA MAP 23005C0, C0, 539F. G, historic and archaeological resources. With the condition of approval, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because there are no known historic or archeologic resources at the site. H, exterior lighting. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed lighting are small, down-directional, motion-detected lights within the fenced compound, which will only likely be on during emergency situations, and will not cast any light on neighboring properties. I, buffering and landscaping. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the project, project, proposed project is located in the center of a 20.7-acre heavily wooded lot, which will remain wooded except for the access road, utility easement, and fenced compound. J, noise. The planning board finds this set, standard is satisfied because the noise from a small condenser fan will not generate significant sound at the property line, and a backup generator will only run after a power outage more than six hours, of more than six hours, and every two weeks for maintenance during which it briefly cycles on and off. K, storage of materials. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because no bulk materials will be stored on site. L, capacity of the applicant. The planning board finds the applicant has financial capacity because the project is funded by Vertical Bridges Equity Partner, Digital Bridge, who has over $88 billion of infrastructure assets. The planning board finds the applicant has technical capacity as evidenced by the use of qualified professionals listed in the application packet. M, design and performance standards. That's Route 100, Route 1, Town Center, Village Mixed Use. The planning board finds the design and performance standards are not applicable for this site. Now, we get into the public safety telecommunications overlay district requirements. D, space and bulk standards. The planning board finds the standards of this section have been met because the proposed tower height is 140 feet, and was sighted approximately 341 feet from the closest property line. Now, zoning and telecommunications facilities, that's Chapter 315-72 requirements. C, submission requirements. The planning board finds the applicant submitted the RF report dated May 15, 2025, by C Squared Systems LLC on behalf of Verizon Wireless. The planning board finds the applicant submitted reference copies of the FCC licenses. The planning board finds the applicant submitted a letter of intent to respond in a timely manner, negotiate in good faith, and allow shared use. The planning board finds the applicant submitted a letter of financial capacity. The planning board finds the applicant submitted the RF report dated May 19, 2025, by C Squared Systems LLC on behalf of Verizon Wireless. The, uh, planning board finds the applicant submitted site photos of existing conditions. The planning board finds the applicant submitted a site plan with clearing limits. The planning board finds the applicant submitted site drawings, including elevation drawings. With the condition of approval, the planning board finds that the structure details will be provided prior to the pre-construction conference. Number 10, the, the planning board finds the applicant submitted a visual impact assessment. 11, the planning board finds the applicant identified the tower will house equipment from the Town of Cumberland and Verizon Wireless, with allowance for antennas and equipment for two additional telecommunications providers. 12, the planning board finds the applicant submitted site drawings, including the access road and fenced compound. 13, the planning board finds the applicant submitted site drawings illustrating compliance with structural requirements. Now, D, space and bulk standards. One, the planning board finds this standard is not applicable because the parcel is located within the public safety telecommunications overlay district, which governs tower height. Two, antennas. The planning board finds this standard is not applicable because the antennas will not be located on an alternative tower structure. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied, this is mounting and dimensions, because one 20-foot whip antenna will be installed at the top of the tower. Microwave dish antennas. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied. Per path reliability, the town requires a 24-inch diameter microwave dish antenna. Panel antennas. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because Verizon's panel antennas will all be mounted at the same height, center line of 126 feet above ground level, and will not exceed eight feet in length and two feet in width. The planning board finds the town's antennas will all be mounted at the same height, center line of 140 feet above ground level. Lot area. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the parcel is located in the low-density residential zoning district, where the minimum lot size is two acres, and the proposed facility is situated on a 20.7-acre lot. Setbacks. The planning board finds this standard is not applicable because the parcel is located within the public safety telecommunications overlay district, which governs setbacks. E, co-location requirements. On existing towers, the planning finds this standard is not applicable because there are no towers or appropriate alternative structures within a one-mile radius of the proposed tower. Construction of new towers. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the tower will house equipment from the Town of Cumberland and Verizon Wireless, with allowance for two additional co-located telecommunications service providers. Interest-
Hey, sorry.
Yeah.
Two or three?
Can we ask the applicant? Because I, I understood two, but then it was three. I thought, like, I thought we were one, they were one, and then there were two more.
So, we were planning to design the tower structurally to suit, uh, public safety equipment, Verizon Wireless, and three additional carriers.
So, that should-
We'll, we'll amend that to three.
Three. For three additional co-located telecommunications service providers. Interest of telecommunications entity. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because as a co-applicant, Verizon Wireless will be locating antennas on the proposed tower. G, design standards. One, wireless communication facilities. The planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed monopole will be painted a flat gray color to blend into the surrounding environment. The planning board finds the fenced compound will be largely shielded from view from Foreside Road by existing forested areas. The planning board finds the telecommunications equipment of the Town Verizon Wireless and future co-locators will be located within the fenced compound, and the fence will be topped with three strands of barbed wire for security. The planning board finds only downward-facing motion-detected lights will be used within the fenced compound. The planning board finds only downward facing motion detected lights will be used within the fenced compound. Antenna arrays, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed antennas will be painted a flat gray color to blend into the surrounding environment. H, location, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because the proposed facility is situated on a wooded lot, which will minimize visibility. The planning board finds that according to Maine Department of Inland Fisheries and Wildlife Environmental Review Tool, there are no threatened or endangered plant or animal species on the twenty point seven acre lot. I, additional standards and criteria, the planning board finds the proposed facility is situated on a wooded lot, which will remain wooded except for the opening for the access road and the fenced compound, largely shielding the facility from view. Okay, and those are the findings of fact.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as amended.
Looking for a second?
Second.
Discussion, all in favor, opposed? Okay, we go into, we've got nine proposed conditions of approval and hopefully somebody is getting ready to read number nine after I get done.
The first. Wait, here, hold on, I think, can we talk about a couple of these? One, what is NEPA?
National Environmental Protection Act.
Okay, thank you. And then on number five, in regards to stormwater, to be a little more precise, I would propose that we use the language provided by SME and make that something along the lines that the applicant will verify that all conditions as outlined in section two two nine dash ten dash C, subparagraphs A, subparagraphs A through F will be met. Of the, sorry, before the will be met of the Cumberland zoning ordinance will be met.
Is the board okay with that? Okay, so we'll, and any other, any other, Josh?
No, you want to do, let's talk, you want to talk about nine, I think it's pretty easy.
Yeah, go ahead and come up with something.
A copy of the lease area boundary will be provided to the town before the pre-construction conference?
Just a clarifying question, do we need that since we have it identified on the site plan?
I don't, that's a good question. Well, here's my question, is it, I mean, I guess what I would say is that's more probably a legal question and if it turns out that the site plan is sufficient, then they have provided it and they've met the condition of approval.
Dan, do you have any opinion on that one?
PE is not equal to JD?
Well, it's your comment, so I'm calling you.
Sure, I think we're comfortable that it's shown on a site plan with the boundary shown. We were looking for some more of a meets and bounds description that would typically be required on a, on a plan and if that can be added to the site plan, I think it would satisfy our intent.
Can leave it in there.
I say we leave it in there and I don't think it will be difficult to meet.
So we keep nine?
Correct.
Okay, so we've got nine proposed conditions of approval. One, the applicant will provide the town a copy of the entrance permit from the Maine Department of Transportation prior to the pre-construction conference. The applicant will submit a geotechnical report with structural specifications to the town prior to the pre-construction conference. The applicant will submit the NEPA approval report to the town confirming that there are no historic or archaeological resources at the site. The applicant will submit a final structural plan for town review and approval prior to the pre-construction conference. The applicant will verify that any changes in stormwater runoff will not, and again, we've changed that, so you have the, you have the right stuff on that. Number six, temporary and permanent erosion control measures will be installed and maintained as outlined in the Maine Erosion and Sediment Control Best Managers, Management Practices, BMPs. All clearing limits shall be flagged and approved by the town engineer prior to the pre-construction conference. Eight, a pre-construction conference is required prior to the start of the construction and what we just did with.
Nine, a copy of lease area boundary is provided to the town prior to the pre-construction conference.
Okay.
I got one more. With a shout out to Ann, the expiration of approval does not match the expiration of approval under site plan review standards. So.
Man, I thought I checked it, okay?
Yeah, we keep running and we keep changing subdivision expiration of approvals and. So with that said, I will make a motion that we approve the site plan for the installation of a telecommunications tower located at fourteen Tuttle Road, tax assessor map R zero one, lot zero three, in the low density residential zoning district and public safety telecommunications overlay district. Subject to the expiration of approval as provided for in section two twenty nine dash eleven of the Cumberland Code of Ordinances, the standard condition of approval and the nine proposed conditions of approval.
Well, I hear a second. Don't everybody jump.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor, opposed? It's approved, good luck. Thank you for everybody coming for, for this item. We'll move on to item number two, a public hearing. Major subdivision amendment for the Mark located at one oh two US Route one is shown on tax assessor map R zero one, lot thirteen B in the office commercial south and mixed use overlay zone zoning districts. The owner is the Mark Real Estate Holdings LLC and the representative is Dan Diffen of CV and Mahar.
Ooh, Pierre?
Yes.
I need to disclose that I am currently working on a project with CV and Mahar, which is completely unrelated to this project. It has nothing to do with anything local or even any land use and I don't believe that it will impact my impartiality of hearing this subject or in making a decision on it, but should the board wish that I recuse myself, I'm happy to do so.
Is the board by a shallow hands comfortable with Josh hearing this item? Okay, thank you for the disclosure. Okay, Bridget, we're ready to go.
Okay, I think the applicant has prepared just some information on how we got here and where we're going. There were a few, I think, minor items that were identified during a more recent inspection that required some attention and a amendment to the subdivision plan. So let's, let's hear from Dan and crew.
Sure, and good evening, everyone. My name is Adam Prescott, I'm an attorney at Bernstein Schur in Portland, Maine and I represent the current new owner of this building, the Mark Real Estate Holdings. Before I turn over to Dan on some of the specifics, I thought it'd be helpful, it just provides a little background. There's been a long history, sort of longer than, than my involvement, but for those of you that have gone by the project, I think hopefully you've seen some good signs recently of, of life in the project moving forward. And so sort of background for when my client got involved, the, the construction was underway in twenty twenty four and around sort of September, October, the former owner, Cumberland Forside Partners, effectively ran out of money to complete the project and that created some issues both with the lenders as well as probably about a couple million dollars in mechanics liens that were placed on the property from various contractors. And so the development and work came to a halt in the fall and really that continued until, call it sort of March or April of this year. My client stepped in to acquire the property from the former owner around sort of March, April with the intent to finish the property with proper financing and to finish it the, the right way where it stalled and then to market the property for sale. Ultimately, the bankruptcy case was filed by my client, I'm a bankruptcy attorney, so that's where, where I came in, which is pending in bankruptcy court in Portland with Judge Carey. And as part of that bankruptcy case, we've done a number of things, which kind of brings us to why we're, why we're here today. In particular, we were able to get those mechanics liens paid off in full. It totaled about two point five million dollars of liens, so those were paid a couple of months ago. In addition, we're able to solidify the financing to finish the construction and maintenance and property management of the property, including for, for Dan and Blaine Buck, who's here from Corja as a construction advisor. That financing is being provided by Builders Capital, which is the senior lender on the property. And so they're, they're funding the expenses to get the property completed. And then just last week, the bankruptcy court approved the procedures for the sale of the property and authorized us to hire Keenan Auction Company and Steph Keenan in order to market the property and to conduct the sale. So Mr. Keenan is actively marketing, you may have seen that online, pictures are available on his, on his website. And we have an auction scheduled for August, sorry, for September seventeenth. And we expect that will be a robust auction, given the interest, and then we'll close on the sale within thirty days or so from there. So in, in my world, that's a relatively normal timeframe. I know it's, it's an expedited timeframe in kind of the, the real non-bankruptcy world, but we're working within a lot of different parameters. But you may have seen on the property, sort of starting around June, based on some, some other events and the funding, that construction picked up, sort of working through the remaining punch list of items, which, which frankly was not that much left to do when it stopped, but it is still work that needs to be done. So that's been ongoing under Blaine's supervision, working with the Stefano and Associates as the GC. And I think we're getting close in terms of finalizing the construction on site. I think Mr. Longley's been out to the property in order for various site visits and working through the certificate of occupancy. So sort of a, a bit of a tortured history, but from at least my perspective, we are in a very good place to get this property finished, get it sold to a, you know, well qualified owner and then I think most importantly, to get it occupied so it can be used for its intended use. So before I turn it over to the, the real experts here and Dan can walk through, I just wanted to make sure everyone had that background. And if there's any questions about the bankruptcy process or how we got here, I'm of course happy to answer that from anyone.
Any questions from the board? Thank you, I think the information is good, not only for us, for the, for the public.
Of course, thank you.
Yeah.
And so my job is made much easier, thank you, Adam. So yeah, we're here to kind of cover what, what has changed out there, project details, Adam covered a lot of it. Started in twenty two, nearly completed in twenty four. Bill Longley went out with Coral Palmer, the town engineer on this project in January twenty twenty five and identified some items that were built a little bit differently on the site plan and some concerns that they had around some drainage and guard rail issues. So just to touch on those real quick, we have a new owner, the retaining wall that was shown in the plan is now replaced with a ledge face, which has been stable, it's been reviewed by a geotechnical engineer and signed off. Because of that ledge, parking space was removed, which reduced the total parking out there from eighty to seventy nine. Again, the required amount was sixty eight as part of the original approval, so we're still above that. We'll be adding another catch basin with some piping where there is some seepage from that ledge wall that created some icy conditions in January, so we're going to address that with a simple catch basin connection. Some curb to fix some of the erosion out there. There were three concrete pads for some mechanical equipment that were added on the southwest corner of the building. And then we will be adding a wooden guard rail along the north end of the parking area. So here is kind of where all that is happening. If, if those, for those of you on the board, back when this last got approved, there was a retaining wall shown along this property edge. As they were excavating out in here, the ledge was found to be more shallow and more durable than was originally anticipated. So this is now just a ledge face that is in existence. The, the parking space that was removed was previously shown here. That ledge face was too close and they decided to remove a parking space. The icy conditions from the seepage in the ledge were observed down kind of across this drive aisle, so we've added a catch basin at a low point that will capture some of that and redirect it into the storm drain system that is already in existence. Here is a vertical piece of curb added where some water that was coming down this drive was washing out some of this island, so that will be added to address that. Down along this face of the building here are where the small concrete pads were added for some of the mechanical equipment, those are in place. We didn't note those with Bill Longley, he said they were okay, just needed to be added to the site plan. And then our guard rail is shown back in here where our graphical arrows seem to indicate that you should drive off the edge of the parking area and now we'd like to prevent people from doing that. So relatively minor site changes when it comes to utilities, stormwater, nothing has changed. We reduced impervious areas slightly by removing this parking space, but not enough to make a difference to the original approval. So really quick overview, but happy to answer any detailed questions.
Questions from the board? Hearing none?
No, is there anything that's actually going to be on those pads, that, those three concrete pads? Or is it like there are also going to be a fence there or something?
Well, those are, I forget, what's the, what's on those pads? The condensed, small condensers for, for, for use in the building, so those are there now, but they're not very large pieces of equipment.
Other questions from the board? Hearing none, I'll open up the public hearing for anybody from the public, which is to speak on this project. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing and go to the board. Do we have any, do we have any waivers? I don't think we do, do we?
Nothing that's, they've all been approved.
You've all, yep.
So I guess we can go, are we ready to go through the findings of fact?
Are there, did any findings of fact get changed, Bridget?
No, but since our ordinance changed for subdivision, I did add findings for farm, no way to where there are new ones.
No, the five.
Spaghetti lots, lake phosphorus concentration, those last five.
You know, the five magic changes that would have to be added.
They all blend into one. What, where, do we have identifying letters or anything?
Yeah, R, S, T, and U.
R, S, T, and U.
R, okay, yeah.
Romeo Sierra Tango uniform?
Yes.
So I will try this out and you can either decide to do it or not. I will make a motion that we waive the reading of the findings of fact except for items R, S, T, and U. A second.
Second, further discussion, all in favor, opposed? So we'll just read our, we'll just read the last three, so Ann, can you?
Sure, okay, these are the draft findings of fact. R, spaghetti lots prohibited.
Hey, Ann, will you talk on your microphone, please?
R, spaghetti lots prohibited. The planning board finds this standard is not applicable because the proposed lots do not have shore frontage. S, lake phosphorus concentration, the planning board finds this standard is not applicable because the development is not near a great pond. T, impact on adjoining municipality, the planning board finds this standard is not applicable because it is wholly located within the town of Cumberland. U, land subject to liquidation harvesting, the planning board finds this standard is satisfied because there is no evidence of liquidation harvesting. And that's it, right?
Okay.
Make a motion that.
Make a motion that we adopt the findings of fact as written.
Second, there don't seem to be any.
Uh, any discussion? All in favor? Opposed? And?
I will make a motion that we approve uh an amendment to the major subdivision for the Mark located at one zero two U S Route one is shown on tax assessor map, R zero one lot thirteen B in the office commercial south and the O C S. Mixed-use overlay zone zoning districts as presented this evening.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Good luck. Okay, item three. A public hearing to request a one-year extension for the major subdivision Snowy Owl Estates. A ten-unit residential development located on Old Gray Road. Tax assessor map U twenty-one lot five E in the Village Mu- Medium Density Residential Zoning District. The applicant owner is S V R L L C, N V Construction. And John Webster is the representative. Bridgette?
Um. Yep, so so this is basically just an extension of an approved subdivision. Um, I think John is here to present a little bit more information on progress and and what's happening over there at Old Gray Road.
John?
And if you need help, you should be able to just plug in.
Yep, perfect. Okay. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm John Webster. I'm the project manager at N V Construction out of Thalmouth. Um, this is a, the the Snowy Owl Development here, uh Snowy Owl Estates. And basically, um, since approval, we have gotten a large amount of the infrastructure completed. One of the biggest hurdles and also delays that we did not foresee happening was a lot of the cooperation with the utility companies. Um, kind of put a damper on things. Um, however, I'm not making excuses here for for any of that, but this improvement here for Old Gray Road, um, where it meets Route one hundred up here where the cursor is, there's a widening of that road and to make it more accessible for vehicles and safer and, you know, as part of the improvements um at the town, we're worked with Sabego Technologies, I think. There's a a utility pole smack right in the middle of the way. And there are three utilities that are on that pole that took almost probably fourteen or fifteen months. I haven't gone through all of my emails and phone calls and all those records, but um of those three companies, it was it was very aggravating working with them and trying to get all their lines relocated onto new poles so that we could complete our work. And we're basically here just, just a few weeks ago, they had finally completed those relocated poles, moved everything and pulled the old poles out. Um, so we're here, you know, just a few weeks after they finally completed that work, um just requesting a one-year extension uh for us to to finish the the improvements of uh the the ro- Old Gray Road and the infrastructure and landscaping of the development itself. I don't know if there's any immediate questions that you have so far?
Questions from the board?
Uh, so, and this is also a little bit for Bridgette to wonder what happens uh if this isn't met, but uh, we have the power to provide, I believe, one twelve-months extension. To the best of your knowledge at this point, are you going to be able to get this completed within that period of time?
Uh, I would say much of the Old Gray Road. Um, that probably could be completed. I can't say for sure, but um, I think what the town is looking for is is the rest of the development. In other words, the cul-de-sac and a lot of that work to be completed as well. That would take a lot more time.
So what do we?
As far as a construction sequence kind of perspective, it doesn't really make a lot of sense to take that route. But yes, you are right. I think that that the town is able to grant us a a one-year extension.
Right, but there's going to be, was it, what's the fallback plan if they don't get this done in a year, which it sounds like they're not going to?
Oh, no, s- sorry, excuse me. Within a year, absolutely.
Oh, okay.
Yes, but within the three years of when it was approved was what I was just speaking to.
Okay, but one more year, you think you can get it done?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay. What what is the fallback plan? They just have to re-present?
So we, they would have to submit a whole new packet, yeah, and get reapproval. Um, the town also holds a
Bond?
Performance guarantee um in the form of a letter of credit in this situation that we can call on to return the site to its original condition or perform the public improvement.
Right, but given, uh, uh, more so, I'm wondering if the app if the ex-applicant wants to continue the project and the town is okay, but it just becomes, you've got to reapply, you can't get another expert uh extension. Okay?
I I believe so, yes.
Uh, other questions from the board? Uh, have you, uh, have you hammered any nails on the buildings themselves?
No, we have not.
Have you drilled any wells yet?
No well drilling has occurred yet either, no. A lot of the blasting has been completed, though. Almost, we expect almost all of the the blasting to be have completed. A lot of why, at least what I've heard from um the engineers that we've worked with, this portion of the road was never paved and completed on Old Gray Road. Um, I was told that was because of the existing ledge. Um, that was many years ago. A lot of that has been um broken up and there will be a little bit more uh ho-raming of the ledge that's there, but I don't expect any more blasting.
Okay, any other questions from the board?
So what have you guys, so I wasn't involved when this project was approved, so you're coming from Gray Road to Old Gray Road, then into your development, right? And what have you guys completed currently?
Um, I'm I'm here with Nick. I think he can speak more to.
Cause you got five.
A lot of the infrastructure within the, those five units has been completed.
What's it?
Nick with N V Construction, the owner. Um, we have done all underground utilities, all underground sewer structures, everything underground's been done, full blasting's been done, all cuts and fills have been done. Uh, the detention ponds completed and stabilized. Um, we basically, the reason we're requiring an extension is because of the um timeliness that it's taken to kind of get all the utilities taken over, so therefore now that the pole's out of the way and everything, I don't think we'll be able to base pay before the winter because we just don't have the time to get it done. We've had to send, set ourselves on other projects instead of going forwards, trying to complete this for the year end, so.
So you have roadwork to do and the five two-units to build? Does that sound right?
Five two-units don't have anything to do with the the performance guarantee or anything like that. So building the two, the five two-units, that that's not part of the approval process. That's individual building permits, as far as my understanding.
So the requirement is for the public improvements to be completed.
Yep.
In the timeframe.
Oh, okay.
Really? I did not know that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, so, yep, we've, I've met with Bill Longley and the applicant to review all the plans, so.
Any other questions from the board? Well, uh, okay, I will uh open the public hearing if uh any members of the public would uh like to uh come up and comment. Uh, you're welcome to. You've been very loyal, sitting through cell tower, the cell tower adventures. We're still alive, or I am.
So we are both in that little house right there. Oh, sorry, Leslie Ford, and we're at ten Old Gray Road, so we're right across the street looking at the, um, I think if we have a definite timeline of when the road was going to be completed, we're fine with it also. I just, we just came here to kind of get a feel of when the road was going to be put in, because we have some major fence work that needs to be done in the front of our house, and we just don't know where the road's going to be.
Can you enlighten this? No, yeah, the, the.
Yeah, yeah.
Please enlighten this.
Our game plan is to have it paved in the spring, so then all the base paving and everything will be done for the spring, because we don't want to try to rush it and get it done right before winter.
Nope, that's all right. That's I just wanted to make sure it wasn't going to go past the year, so.
Thank you.
So you can mend your fences at that point. Okay, any other, uh, any other members of the public wish to speak, then uh hearing none, I'll close the uh public hearing. And uh, I guess all we need is a motion.
Uh, I will make a motion that we approve a one-year extension for the major subdivision Snowy Owl Estates, ten-unit residential development located at Old Gray Road. Tax assessor map, U twenty-one lot five E in the Village Medium Density Residential Zoning District.
Uh, do I hear a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Opposed? Good luck and start digging. Or keep digging, I guess is the. Okay, that uh, that ends our uh, our regular business. Uh, Bridgette, do we have any administrative matters to discuss?
I think just one item, if you haven't heard from me enough about this, um, on Monday, August twenty-fifth at five P M, um, we were invited to a joint workshop with the town council and the comprehensive plan committee to meet with the town's attorney to review the new um state law that is coming eighteen, or L D eighteen twenty-nine.
What is eighteen twenty-nine?
So.
Oh, gosh, you don't want to know.
Such a good question. So eighteen, eighteen twenty-nine amends um the definition of subdivision. Um, and I'm, I have, let me pull this up real quick. There's, so it it'll change subdivision rule and zoning. Um, it is particularly in growth areas. Um, it has smaller lot size requirements um inside and outside of growth areas with sewer, off of sewer. Um, and so we'll learn all about that. I have a I have a copy of the packet that will go out to the planning board with this infor- or with, to the town council with this information, and I'll send it out tomorrow or Thursday to everyone to look at. It'll include a copy of the law for you to look at, but there's um, there's some big changes.
Yeah, it's a, it's a monster. So any, uh, we've got that, uh, uh, what, what if anything is on the horizon for uh September?
Great question. I have not received any applications, which were due today, for site plan or subdivisions in September, so.
And no ord- ordinances from the, from us or the council?
Nothing coming. Nope, so September, I think we'll get a, get another break.
Okay.
Um, and we'll see what comes in October.
Okay, well, I guess I'm ready for a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion, we adjourn?
Second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Thank you, everybody.